I just wanted to double check because I know the planning commissioners received the full packet. Okay, all right. And all right, what did they get it before we did?
Uh, yes, I believe the the planning technician sent that out last week.
Okay. And the city commissioners catch that we got the packet in a little. Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's had a chance to see it. All right. So with that, uh.
Sure. Um, I've got a microphone on, so hopefully everyone can hear me.
Oh, there you go. And if I may actually, before we.
Yes, please.
Let's introduce our new planner, too.
Yes.
Jeff Adams. Hello?
Yes.
Welcome.
So, yes. No. Yes, Jeff, welcome. We're all happy to have you here. My tenure was short, but hopefully was did the job to get you through the the time. Until you have someone very capable to help you with your planning efforts as we move forward. So. My name is Scott Friganesi. Of course, I've been your interim city planner for three months. I work for 3J Consulting. Heather Austin is a colleague of mine. She also works with 3J Consulting. She's actually going to do the majority of the presentation tonight. I can help with any questions, but she did a lot of the code work and has helped us through this. We've been at this project now for over six months. We've done a little bit of public outreach, and I think that both the planning commission, not all the planning commissioners, because we have some new ones, but the some that have been on. And then the city commission have seen pieces of this and are aware this is going on. But we had, like I mentioned, the public outreach was a light touch, just to be totally honest with you, we didn't have great turnout at our online open house and those things. So I thought that it'd be great to have this work session with both planning commission and city commission, just to bring everyone up to speed. The next steps with this would potentially be planning commission hearing this at a public hearing, and then if everything is right, and they think that that is, everything is buttoned up and looks good, that we would be recommendation to then send it to the city commission for adoption at a later today. A couple of things about the projects, it was funded through a DLCD grant, so the city isn't paying for this, the state is paying for this. And again, it's to update your middle housing code. So the reason that the state funded this was because there are some elements of our code that are not currently in compliance with the state's housing rules. So that's one of the reasons we're doing this. The purpose of the project is to develop adoption ready code amendments. So that will be the final product of this. The idea is we're going to facilitate additional housing production. You've heard that a ton. I know several of you are on committees with the with the county for housing, so it's doing that housing production, also looking at affordability and choice. So those are kind of our guiding tenants in this. Some of the amendments would include duplexes on all single family detached lots in accordance with House Bill 2001. If you hear about House Bill 2001, that was the bill that passed for that required cities to allow middle housing, which are these higher density types in traditionally single family only residential zones. Some of the other amendments you might see will be things like in the single family zones, including accessory dwelling units, manufactured homes, and other middle housing types like triplex, quadplex, townhomes, and either in things like cottage clusters could could be something that we can consider. Another thing is is important is we're not addressing our multifamily code. So this is really just for our single family housing. We don't get into multifamily. We don't get into commercial. We don't get into mixed use. So a lot of other cities that I've been working have had had a desire to kind of go beyond this. And I think that there and just my work with 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 both the planning commission, city commission, I've I've heard some desires to look at other elements of the code in the future and do maybe a code audit, look at some updates to other sections. So I guess my point here is that we're really focused on a narrow band of allowing this middle housing types in your current single family zones. And I think if there's no general questions, I'd like to pass it on to you, Heather, to kind of walk through the presentation. I hope I didn't steal any of your thunder.
Oh, I a lot of it, but that's okay. I'll just reiterate what you said. Thank you for that great introduction, Scott. I'm just going to request, oh, it looks like I'm able to share. So I'm going to just pull up the slideshow and share that so we can go through that together. There we go. Can everybody see that? All right. I'm not hearing anything, but I'm not hearing any. Okay, great. Okay, great. I didn't hear opposition, so I was just going to move on forward with it. So as Scott said, good evening. My name's Heather Austin. I'm a planner with 3J Consulting. I do a lot of code work throughout the state, so a lot of jurisdictions, a lot of middle housing code over the last few years. So I've gotten to roll up my sleeves and get into a lot of different types of codes. And Warrington is, you know, unique in that all cities have their unique aspects, but also there are some common threads that I'd like to identify here that we can move forward with fairly simply. So as Scott said, the project objective, well, Scott mentioned putting together code that's ready to be adopted. And that code should help with addressing a portion of Warrington's housing needs. It should help expand the opportunities for middle housing in ways that are compatible within Warrington. That's where we want to make sure it's specific to the city. We're meeting state requirements where we have to, but then anything that we have discretion over, we're making sure it's the right fit for the city. And then, yeah, like I said, bringing the city into compliance with recent changes to state law. And for that, the state did fund this project. So the middle housing, there's different types. This is a state defined term. It includes accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. The intent is to increase housing options and accessibility, but I always want to make it really clear that any new housing units are generally. These smaller units can be less expensive than new single detached units, but they're not considered capital A affordable. So we're not talking about anything regulated, any kind of threshold as per your percentage of median income, nothing. This is all market rate housing we're talking about. So like Scott said, we're not getting into multifamily housing, and we're definitely not getting into policies regarding affordable housing here. So just a review for those of you who've been along the way and maybe an update for those who are new of where we've been with this project over the last, I think Scott said, six months, maybe a little more. We started by looking at the existing standards, seeing what Warrington's currently doing in each of its residential zones, interviewing some stakeholders, some builders who work in Warrington and around the community. Looking into the code and drafting some an audit and some code concepts of where we could make changes, reviewing that with your technical advisory committee. And then with the PC and CC, we had a one of these meetings, I believe, last September. Then we had a community meeting, but unfortunately, we did not get anybody to attend that, but we did get some online survey response. So we were able to take those pieces into the draft proposed code update, and that's what's before you this evening. So once we've had this meeting and had a chance to hear from both the planning commission and city council in this joint forum, then we'll go ahead and fine tune that language and bring it forward for a planning commission hearing, where they'll make a recommendation to the city commission who'll make the final decision. So the community engagement that's been done, three stakeholder interviews, we were able to speak to three different housing developers in the community. They mentioned things like challenges to permitting and inflexible zoning, so not being able to right size the type of housing to the zoning that was available. Housing and affordability needs of the local community, trying to match the price point to what the market is bearing, and then current regulatory barriers to development. So things that stand in the way of getting that project approved. In the technical advisory committee, we spoke in detail about the different housing types and what types of dimensional standards could be adjusted to make these housing types more practical. And then what we should be looking at as far as parking. And then in the six participants to the survey, most supported the proposed changes to allow housing flexibility, as well as changes to some standards regarding carports and then parking that we'll talk about in a few minutes. So the code audit and code concepts are broken into some different categories. And here I added this little dash green line to show what's required versus below the line, which is what where there's flexibility for us to make some some interpretations that are warrant in specific. So above the line, we have to allow accessory dwelling units for every single family detached dwelling, and that's in all residential zones. Duplexes have to be permitted on every lot where a single family detached dwelling is permitted. And then we have to comply with state regulations that are affecting other areas. And specifically, we noticed manufactured homes and then residential homes aren't up to date in the code. So where we have some flexibility is the other middle housing types, so triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. These start to be required when you're over 10,000 in population, so Warrington is small enough to not require that. But there was some discussion early in the project of expanding our housing choices in some ways, being aware of our zoning differences and being respectful of our lower density zones being for those more single family detached. But then really focusing the ability to change the housing types in those medium, intermediate, and higher density zones. While multifamily is not the focus of this code audit, like we said, we did adjust a few things, one being just the definition of middle of a multifamily, which if we add quadplex, then multifamily becomes five units or more. If we don't add quadplex, then four units or more can stay for multifamily. So nothing too too big there. And then clarification, we added things where we felt that the standards weren't clear and objective, which that is a requirement of Oregon state law that anything that applies to a housing application have clear and objective standards. And then we just looked at it for usability and internal consistency, like, did we write something in three of our residential zones in one way and then one another way? So should we just simplify it and make it all consistent? So by by housing type, we'll start with accessory dwelling units. Currently, we have a requirement that if there's not two parking spaces already on a lot, then the addition of an ADU requires a parking space. We're not able to do that any longer, so we need to remove that extra parking space requirement. So that's the required at the top. What we're recommending is that if you have an ADU, that you may want to have a slightly higher lot coverage standard from 35% to 40% in R40 and R10. In the higher density zones, or excuse me, in just RM, it goes from 40% to 45%. And then regarding that parking, we did have a conversation, believe it was the joint work session last fall, where the idea came up to allow an increase in the square footage of the ADU if you did provide that parking space. So your maximum is 600, but if you provide an additional parking space, you could increase the size up to 800. So on those larger lots where there's plenty of space for parking and maybe a bigger ADU makes sense, then you could do that. And then also increasing the maximum height from 16 feet to 24 feet, or same as the primary structure, whichever is less. And that's where you really get those in the top right there, the ADU over garage. You wouldn't be able to really do that at 16 feet, so keeping your options open for different configurations with that height. Duplexes, again, we have to require duplexes in all zones where single family detached housing is permitted. So we would need to add duplexes as a permitted use in the R40, the low density, and R10 medium, or excuse me, intermediate, medium density zone. We already permit duplexes in the residential medium and residential high density zones. And then we have to reduce the parking required from 1.5 spaces per unit down to one space per unit. So those are required by state law for us to comply, but down in the recommended, we have two thoughts. One is to allow duplexes in any configuration, and that's where you currently the definition of duplex in the Warrington code requires it to be two attached units. But if you allow any configuration, you open up the possibility of there being two smaller units on a lot. You know, having a different, if you have an odd shaped lot, sometimes it makes sense to be able to do that sort of thing. So it increases the ability. Of course, those would still have to meet setbacks and height and lot coverage, so you would still have those same dimensional protections that you have of the duplex that's attached. And then the other idea would be to limit carports and garages, and this would apply to single family and duplexes to a maximum width of 50% of the lot width. And that just reduces the impact of those garage doors and carports. Next is proposed changes for triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and multifamily housing. And again, none of these are required because Warrington does not meet the population threshold to be required to do so. So we're not recommending that any of these housing types be permitted in the R40 zone. That's our lowest density zone that we have set aside a single family and now duplex development only. But to permit cottage clusters in the R10 and RM zones, they're currently permitted in the RH zone. And then permit quadplexes in the RM and RH zones. We don't address quadplexes right now, so it's the code is silent on this housing type. A four unit structure would be considered multifamily currently, so that would be a change. And then, you know, we do have the option of reducing required parking from 1.5 spaces per dwelling to one space per dwelling, which, you know, if you were a larger population city, that would be required. Multifamily, we're not recommending that at this time, although, again, that does come into play at that larger city size. And then currently, our minimum lot size for cottage clusters is 15,000 square feet. But if you reduce down to 10,000, you might open up the availability of more lots to be developed as cottage cluster. And in the packet that you received for this evening, if you did get a chance to read through that, we were recommending that we change the minimum number of lots from, or excuse me, minimum number of dwelling units from four to six. I actually am no longer recommending that with the reduced minimum lot size recommendation. So recommending keeping it as is. I realize that your cottage cluster code is fairly new and was written very recently. So I think keeping that at the same number of units makes sense. Townhouses. So townhouses was one area where I felt like a lot of impact could be made because currently at a minimum lot size of 2,500 square feet and minimum lot width of 25 feet. And mostly, it's the maximum lot coverage of 35 to 55%. It's really not even possible or feasible to build a townhouse on with those configurations. So you would be looking at 25 foot wide units that are on just giant lots. I just haven't seen a market that would bear that type of construction. So we do recommend the minimum lot size to go down to 1,400 square feet. And that is because when you reduce the minimum lot width to 20 and your minimum lot depth depth is 70, that's at 1,400 square feet. And then increasing the maximum lot coverage up to 75% allows you to build those attached units. And then we do have some code recommended where you amend the front and rear setbacks based on where the parking is located. So if the parking is in the rear, maybe you reduce that front setback from 15 feet down to 10 feet. Or if the parking is in the front, you can reduce that rear setback down from 15 to 10. It just allows more flexibility of placement on the lot. So again, those are all options to consider for townhouses. I think the most impactful would be the lot size and lot coverage, and definitely lot width would be very helpful in that case as well. And then we don't specifically say no minimum side setbacks, but that's kind of a given with attached dwelling units. For manufactured houses, housing, we do have to update our standards, and that's a pretty big change to that code section. Currently, we have a lot of individual standards for manufactured homes that can no longer be applied. We're not able to apply any standards to a manufactured home on an individual lot that wouldn't apply to a single family unit, except for efficiency and design standards, which were already in the code, so we're recommending keeping those.
Heather, I'm not sure if there was a slide on that or not. Was there a slide for the manufactured or not?
Oh, it's just right here in the bottom right.
Just making sure we didn't miss it. Thanks.
Yep. So the the final piece that we had in the packet of information was on street parking. We talked a lot about there aren't a lot of places in Warrington where the streets are developed fully, where on street parking makes a lot of sense, but there are some places where it does. And so if we were to allow on-street parking to count for off-street parking required spaces, we'd want to make sure that those are on streets where the street is built to the full city build out for on-street parking. And then we want to make sure that each parking space is at least 20 feet long to count for the parking space on the property. So that's how we have that code drafted. And that is it for the the proposed changes. I threw this date on here for next steps to Planning Commission, June 12th and City Commission, June 24th, just because those are on your calendar. I don't know if that's scheduled or not, but I know we are, and I'll link to Scott to.
It's fine. We're not going to be discussing the dates right now.
Okay, okay, great. So that is all I have for you and happy to go to the slides that have the individual housing types for the discussion, or if you just want to start with the discussion and then go back to slides.
If it's okay with everybody, I think we just start at the top and discuss our way down. So we'll start with your first slide on the. It was before that, wasn't it? Or is it ADUs? Okay.
This one just kind of lists everything, so the first specific would be ADUs.
Yeah. Okay, so has anybody got any thoughts on ADUs?
Well, I have a concern, and I brought this up. I was on the tack when they when they had the, it was last fall, I guess it was, that we met one time. My concern is, is if when you do an ADU, especially in a to a builder to require a builder to now to address putting an ADU, it raises the cost of the price of the home. We already have a housing issue cost problem, so if we continue to add more expense to that builder to have to have to include an ADU, a certain amount have to build if you build so many homes, then I'm just concerned that we've now continued to add to the price of what it costs to purchase a home.
But we don't require ADUs anymore. Remember, we stripped that, didn't we?
But if we do, if we can, if we if we say, okay, you have to, this is brought up, that if you have to build an ADU and put an ADU into into every, I don't remember, you can remind me, but every so many homes built in a subdivision have would have to have a have to have an ADU attached to it, and that just means that the homes will continue to raise its costs every time you added another ADU at the builder's expense, which is just going to be passed on to the consumer, and the consumers are already fighting to figure how they're going to pay the cost of a home today in this community, so.
My understanding was that 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 I thought we'd stripped that out of the code, though. I thought that was.
If that's been taken out, I'm not aware of that.
I feel like we rescinded that of the code.
And Heather, I'd like you to confirm.
Because that was a Kevin Cronin edition that I think we changed during the J time.
Now, since then, Matt, when Matt, when we had our meeting with Tac back in when Matt was here, this was brought up then, too.
I don't believe that this proposal includes requiring ADUs.
That's right. Sorry, that is correct. There's no requirement that we're proposing that you produce that. I was just trying to flip out of my presentation so I could look at your code. Currently, I have the code pulled up just to see if it's in there. But I didn't see it when going through to draft these changes, so I think it must be removed. But I'm happy to check for that.
I remember it came up, and I remember it was at one point a if it wasn't a requirement, it was suggested something that.
Well, yeah, even to my time back when I was on the planning commission, this is this came up at the planning commission meetings, I mean, and I can. I just, I just, I'm personally, you know, opposed to, I guess, to the ADU premise, only because I feel that, you know, what we're doing, we've done before. There's a perfect example of a home in Hammond that has a house next to it, a tiny home next to it. You know, that was originally put in as as a short term, we're going to let you do this while your relative passed, and then, of course, your relative passed and and the home just got continued. And and then the home got sold to another family, and it just continues, and it's just. I'm just not a big fan of making people have ADUs, and I'm also opposed to where ADUs go. I just want to be very careful about where we allow people to put ADUs. If we have a lot and you're now going to add two tiny homes in the back of that of that lot, I mean.
Well, if I call it ADUs, there can only be one person.
Well, it's based upon a square footage, about how much land you have.
Just one, one per dwelling, one, one per primary dwelling.
Otherwise, you're starting to go into cottage cluster territory.
Correct. Yep.
Yeah.
But you could build a new product as a cottage cluster if you choose to do that, and you could put up.
Well, not in the R, excuse me, not in the R40 zone, yeah.
But it's looks like the looks like the AD requirements been scrubbed. Okay. But I think it's good to note, follow back on that. I mean, I support if, you know, if we're going to be required to have ADUs, I do support requiring a addition, you know, if you want to get bigger, then you got to add parking off-street, especially since I think that a lot of ADUs are going to be built in infill, and they're not going to necessarily be built new in terms of, you know, it's going to be an existing house, someone's going to add something to it. Because there's a lot of streets in the city of Warrington, and particularly in the Hammond district, that are substandard in width, and everyone fills their garage full of junk. That's just, that's northwestern life, right? So let's be honest, the garage does not function as anything but a mini storage for the house. So very few people park their cars, all their cars in the garage, I should say. And so we know that that's going to create on-street parking requirements. And my biggest concern is if anybody's ever gone through Southwest Gardenia Street, or anybody's gone southeast Willow to Honeysuckle Loop, you can't get a fire truck through there when there's parking on both sides. You know, and people put their boat trailers because they got nowhere else to go because they're small house lots, right? So they get parked on the street, you can't get barely a truck through them. So I think parking is, as much as I resent the state's involvement in in requirements to meet their standards instead of relaxing other requirements that would be better for development and enablement. I think that we still need to be attentive to the parking impacts and what that means for public safety and first responders in those neighborhoods.
So that, yeah, not only that, but I agree that the on-street parking is going to be an issue, especially in Hammond. We live on the same street. We were just talking about it. I mean, it's a narrow road. If you were to, most people who park there now, because we have soft curves, we don't have hard curves. People end up parking on the sidewalk in both, because if you didn't, there would not be enough room for for vehicles, especially for responders, if they had to come in in that neighborhood. But also, I'm concerned about issues that we already have within the city of of Warrington, and that is code enforcement for people who are parked multiple cars, and then having more than one cab parked inside this street that, you know, there's now assigned to this ADU, but unless we're really policing it, we could actually literally end up with a street full of people's automobiles parked.
And the problem with on-street parking, too, especially as a more permanent parking standard is especially in rural areas like Warrington, children play, and then a ball gets between the cars, and then somebody has the possibility of being ran over. So it's, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a tricky subject. So is there any other questions on ADUs?
Firewall?
Well, I believe that you can actually do ADUs not detached, can't you?
You can. You can do them attached or detached. I think the difference would be if you have your own kitchen. I mean, it has to actually be a habitable space to be a separate quote unquote dwelling unit, a kitchen and bathroom. Is that right, Heather?
That's correct. It'd be a separate living facility. Yep. And I know in other jurisdictions I work in, the building department does review those as a separate habitable space.
Does it answer your question, Mike? Okay. So is everybody fine with with that at this current moment? All right, we'll move on. I will say that I I don't have a problem with upping lot coverage on ADUs up to 45% in R10 specifically. But I think the recommendation is fine as is. I'm not going to down that, but let's go to the next one. Duplexes. So what the, what is the requirement for the state is specifically just that we have to allow them in single-family zoning areas?
Yes.
That is correct.
It doesn't state that we can't put other restrictions on duplexes to make them blend in with the neighborhood. What I mean by that is, my concern is, okay, I'm thinking right off Alder right now. So I don't know what's being built there, but let's just pretend, say it is a duplex. That's a lowland. It's in a floodplain. They're going to have to elevate the property to build on it. So then if you go two-story duplex, now all of a sudden you're going to be not, you know, if it's one thing to be two stories, it's another to be elevated five, six feet and then you're two stories and now you're overshadowing the whole neighborhood. So my, and my concern is about, does it match the neighborhood feel by adding in this density? Because the reason why originally single-family zoning existed is so that people kind of pretty much knew their neighbors. There was mostly, you know, houses. I'm not saying that you don't know your neighbors with duplexes, but it's, it's a different feel to a neighborhood, so to speak. And I don't have a problem with mixed-use zoning. But I think if you start creating cheap towers, for lack of a better term, that you separate into duplexes or whatever, that that might alter the neighborhood in a way that may or may not be positive, particularly if it's in a floodplain. Of course, you don't have to build towers for duplexes. You could also, you know, build them, you know, single-story attached. But I don't know if anybody else had any feelings about duplexes.
I was just going to jump in and say that we just are required to hold duplexes to the exact same standards as single-family detached. So it'd be the same dimensional standard, same setback, same height. If we had, you know, recommend, requirements for design standards, windows and doors and things like that, they would apply equally to single-family detached and to duplexes. The idea is that a duplex should be built in the same box configuration as a single-family home could be. So if a single-family home can be 30 feet in height, you could build that or somebody could build a duplex and both could be exactly the same in size.
Well, the state's requiring duplexes to be treated as a, as a house. There's no real differentiation.
Correct. Except for the parking is one per unit for duplex. But you're allowed to keep your two per single-family, so it really is pretty much the same.
Does the heart height start from the original flood land or where it's elevated?
So if it's in, if it's in a flood zone, it's, it's, the finished floor has to be one foot above base flood elevation. So wherever the surveyor says that's your flood elevation, you take 12 more inches and that's where your finished floor is for your structure. And then your height calculation starts from there up.
So, yeah, and infill that becomes a, we've seen that, especially in the older neighborhood. I, I guess, Mike, so you said that the parking for duplexes, while it's being reduced to one space, space per unit by the state, single-family is still allowed to require still two. So tell me, tell me with that dichotomy there.
Well, I, I think on that one, it's there, they weren't looking to make any changes to single-family detached. So they didn't legislate that anything happened to those houses. So you can still build those. You can still require that parking. But when you go to build a duplex on that same size lot, you are limited to requiring two spaces. You're not limited to building that. A developer market could still say two per unit is what's needed to make this feasible. And so you could have four, but you can't require anymore than two per unit, per, per structure, you know, two, one per, per unit, two for the lot.
But typically they'll build these with a garage and a driving, a driveway. So, I mean, I can't guarantee you that's going to happen, but most of the developers I've seen that do these product types, if they're not limited because the lot's weird or they need to make it, make the building fit, they're going to put a garage and they're going to put a driveway because they can sell it or rent it for more. So there's a market aspect to the providing parking as well, what's required versus, you know, what's, what's allowed.
Commissioner Poe first, then there.
I have a recent triplex on my block. They filled quite a bit of sand, so they lifted it. There was quite a bit of wetland growth in that area, but they, somehow they were able to use sand, put sand in there and they put four or five feet in there. A lot of dump trucks. There's one garage per unit, which is a single driveway. There's more than two cars there. They stick out in the road about three feet. Second car, if it's a double truck or something, you know, an extra cab picked up or something. It's out in the street about three feet. And when I drive by there, I just can't shake my head and go, that probably wasn't the best. I don't plan about it really because it's light traffic. It isn't always sticking out.
But that goes to the same thing that we had the issue with Southwest or Fourth, where we were going to put a sidewalk in, but because the driveway is not sufficiently long, the guy's, you know, crew cab truck with a standard bed and a ball in the back sticks right into the spot where if you were to walk on the sidewalk, you wouldn't be able to walk the sidewalk. You have to walk around out on the street. So maybe the solution, I think, Commissioner Poe, to what you're saying is, are you suggesting maybe that the lot deck from the road frontage where parking was has to be a sufficient distance to enable?
Pretty tight on the street. It does have small backyards. I think he put as much as he could in those lots. He even tried to squeeze Wallace for a 25-foot wide section so he could tack another one on there. Really grip and moaned that Wallace couldn't do anything with that lot. Give it to him. Of course, Wallace didn't. Yeah. But he put as much as he could. They have small backyards. The backyards do slope. I think Ferguson property behind the library, they did a similar thing, but they, they weren't quite, they don't stick out in the road. I think they had those back a little bit more. That, those particularly, if you're coming around a corner, cars are coming at you here to the stop sign. And then you're coming in a small street in Hammond. And then you've got vehicles through two, three feet out on the pavement, over the back of the driveway and it's the actual street. And so I do kind of shake my head when I look at that. Nothing bad's happened. And there are little kids too that shoot in and around the driveway. Luckily, it's, it's slow. People drive slow most of the time. But it is, I do shake my head when I look at it. Buildings should have been set back more or they should have a requirement. You can only have one car in the driveway.
No.
That was the same thing I was thinking about that fourth street down here.
So I mean, does anyone feel that maybe a way to address the parking issue is to, from the road frontage where, you know, off-street parking is supposed to be, that we extend it to a certain depth requirement? That would ensure that, let's just say like a long bed truck with four, four door can be fitted in there?
Well, yeah, if you go to Jennifer Ridge, for instance, a perfect example of where they'd started building duplexes. They're making them double deep. The drives are all double deep. I think that's a requirement needs to be made so that you may only be one car, but it's deep enough for that one car, actually two to sit there. One maybe have to be out to the other, but it, it takes care of that problem from keeping it off the street. You could never, in Jennifer Ridge, Mike, free, free to correct me, but you could never, where they started building the duplexes, you could never park on the sidewalk there and expect any kind of emergency responder to be able to get there, period. There's just not enough room. And but they, back to your issue about being conforming to, to the neighborhood. I mean, while the, what they've done is in, in Jennifer Ridge, which sort of fits the scheme, is it, when you first come into it, are the duplexes and they're all set together and then you come into the family homes? You know, if you, if we're to come into a, a neighborhood somewhere else where there happened to be one empty house or one empty lot and you were to build there, you'd probably drop housing values by putting that duplex there 10 to 15%.
So. It's not a requirement. Not unless you limit the size of the house. Yeah.
Can you require street parking? Well, because in today's world, people can't afford housing, so more people live in units and they all have cars. So you get more than three cars, you get three cars for a household easily and sometimes more. So there's nowhere for people to park, so they park on the lawns and everywhere because there's no street park. So includes, as well as including the depths of the driveway, can you also require on-street park? So the street, if it's not wide enough, then it can't be zoned in to put in a duplex.
I thi, I think Heather was mentioning, you can, we could potentially require it if the street is built with on-street parking. We don't want to require it in areas that there is not.
Insufficient, insufficient, insufficient infrastructure. Right. So if it's a 20, with a 28 with planar strips and sidewalks, which is 36 total, I think.
Yeah.
Then yeah, but if it's not, then you can't, because it's 12, 12-foot drivelines, if I remember right, with the center lane. And then usually there's a bike or if you don't have a sidewalk, you have at least a bike path or, or sidewalk. So to your question, Dan, you're asking if they can, can you sharp, with that information, can you sharpen the question?
So can you, along with making the driveway long, can you make it a requirement that duplexes are allowed in residential areas? If the street is wide enough for additional parking or on-street park?
No, we have to, the state requires that we allow them in any single-family lot, regardless of the street scape.
But I guess I, my question is, can we, can you change the, can, instead of saying that you need to have a two-car off-street parking requirement, can you just say you have to have X by X parking space?
Well, then you're, then you're requiring parking spaces and, and we're not allowed to require more than one.
Right, but you're just making up parking space in terms of you have an apron.
Yeah. I mean, that's setback. You're, you're increasing your front yard setback then.
Okay.
And I, I'm assuming that those, what you're describing is probably 15 feet. And so you get one car and a half.
At the most, they're, they're pretty small. And then like Henry says too, now that I think about it, no, no one puts their door in the garage.
Yeah, exactly.
Basically, they're calling that garage a parking space.
Yep.
Then they're calling the driveway a parking space and they're probably saying one street park, but they're really, so on those, there's really, I mean, they can do street parking, but it's more like one yard.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they even leave a buffer from the house for street parking. They just made the yard come right to the street, one 15 feet.
I, I think if I'm recalling, and again, my fingers are itching to close the slides and look at the code, but I think it's a 15-foot front yard setback in most of the zones. And so what we could do, a 20-foot is, is kind of a standard driveway depth to really fit that full truck with the hitch on the back. So one thing we could consider, but of course we'd have to apply it for all lots, whether they have a single-family home or duplex. But we could say the front setback is 20 feet where the parking is. And then maybe we keep it at 15 feet so you can still have that, you know, bump out living room or kitchen or front porch that fills that front yard space and keep that where the current setback is. But where you have a vehicle parked and you are required to have a vehicle parked, that you have a minimum of 20 feet deep.
There's one more wrinkle in that I would just say is that I think there should be flexibility to allow that if you, because of, there's some weird lots out there. That you should be able to have instead of your standard straight in off-street, but you could get, you could allow for a different setback if you had, like, that's what they call it, like alleyway park?
Diagonal.
Where the basically, I, you see it a lot in middle America where it's not necessarily alleyway, but where people can drive two cars this way. Instead of side by side, it's, you know, it's tandem. You know, that that could be an allowed, that, that would give the, the development director sufficient discretion without having to subject them to a variance process, so to speak, because those typically could be used for that process. I, I think that that would solve a lot of problems.
I'd like to say that other condos that just went in too, the Hanson condos, they are 15 feet off the sidewalk. They have no driveway or park or garage in front.
To the back.
It's all in the alleyway at the back.
Right.
Garage is a double park. So they actually hold four. And most of those garages are being used.
It's, it's very, yeah, it's, it's very specific, lot specific. And that's why we're trying to be able to allow for the flexibility for this to be able to happen, but not be so.
That's why I bring it up because it is lots specific.
Yeah.
So I do wonder if we can just define an off-stri, off-street parking space as a minimum of, you know, eight feet by 20 feet or something as simple as that, that you're required to provide one of these. And this is the configure, this is the minimum dimensional. Would that address?
I think that would help, having a dimension, right?
Right now, at the, at the playgrounds and stuff, everybody's doing off-street parking on the only area that actually has a sidewalk. And so they're parking on the sidewalk or they're parking in the park. And that's the off-street parking is actually in the actual parking. Because there's no parking for the park. So it's kind of like, no matter what, you make all this regulations, but it's going to be so dependent. It's going to be so varied from place to place, from the different, ones that actually accommodate, you know, the garage and then parking. We just built a house that we did a duplex, a single-family with an ADU over the garage. And we did exactly 18 inches, 18 feet in, and the cars still don't fit them straight in to be off-street parking. So they're parking at an angle.
Okay.
But it's sort of hell. And then we did exactly what a lot, even if it was 20 feet, it's double B two type there as well. So it's kind of, it's, I think I should try to.
I think there's, I think there's a, there's a one segment where it's like, you're going to catch 90% of what you need on new development. And then that other 10% is going to have to go through a variance process to determine through the discretion of this board, your board, on how to do that. So I, I guess the question is, what's the least, wha, what accomplishes the majority of the goal? And I think angled parking is a great aspect. And Jeff, just because you're new, doesn't mean that you can't chime in if you feel like you have something else to say. So, but I'm not going to put you on the spot.
I think he's being wise.
Parked in area for the whole group?
Well, again, we have to, this, we're on duplexes and duplexes, if we treat it the same as a single-family home. So in terms of the group area, that would be more like a cottage cluster parking.
Yep. And that's why we're saying if you do want to change the dimensional dimensions, that we have to do it for the whole zone, not just for duplexes.
Right. And I, that's why I think that if you, if you create a straight-in tandem parking, you can get away with that setback issue. And so you have enough flexibility to get what you need.
Totally.
Without having to blanket everything under the sun. And then also on duplexes, I think the current single-family code also requires garage or carport, correct?
I believe that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Macarons to a maximum width of 50% a lot width. Can you tell me a little bit more about the carport standard in terms of maximum width? And the other reason why I'm asking that is because again, single-family dwelling, barn dominiums are becoming more popular. So I'm, I don't want to preclude barn dominium development. There's a lot of, for lack of a better term, a lot of guys that get divorced and they want to have a barn dominium, right? So like, and there's some people that are living as a family in barn dominiums, you know, where the primary use is, you've just got a big garage and you've got a little apartment, basically, they live. Where does barn dominiums fit? That would be under the single-family code, would it not?
It sure would. Yeah. And, and so that would not be something that would be outright permitted if we did limit the width of duplexes, or excuse me, the width of carports and garages. And I haven't come across a lot of barn dominiums. That's a unique Warrenton. So that's the kind of thing to take into. Yeah, yeah.
But I guess maybe can that be a separate section of the code or do we have to treat it the same as as a single-family housing? How do you fit that square peg in that one home?
Yeah.
You, you can put that requirement into your accessory structures code, but again, I wouldn't want it to preclude a housing type that is becoming popular. So I think my recommendation would change if that is something where you're, and I, I appreciate the term, I've never heard it before, a barn dominium, where you have perhaps a garage, the entire frontage of the first floor and then a unit on top. And if that's something that fits into the community, I think we shouldn't limit the widths of the carports.
Probably something we probably send back to you guys for further study.
Yeah.
So we can move this along.
Sure. Sounds good. Okay. Should we move forward to the other housing types?
Right. That's the issue. That's, that's the issue that I'm pointing out is that the code doesn't allow garages that big with a, you know, the way that is. So, because if the primary use is a garage, even if the primary use is actually also living. So.
And that, that may be something that's beyond this, this project.
Yeah, we may need to make that.
Code, I brought it up, so.
Sure, sure. We will look into it and work with your staff and make a recommendation if it needs to be part of a separate project.
But it sounds like you've heard that there's, we need flexibility, but also probably some changes onto the parking standard. So.
Yes.
Especially if the state's going to kill the parking standard for us and.
Yeah, it sounds like we definitely need to make sure the parking spaces that are provided can actually fit a vehicle. That seems very reasonable.
Go to the next slide.
Okay. So triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and multi-family. Questions are, should we permit cottage clusters in R10 and RM? We currently only allow them in the RH zone. So should they be allowed in those medium-density zones? So should they be allowed in those medium-density zones?
Um, well, I mean, all, you're changing the multifamily from four-plus to five-plus, because quadplexes would be four.
Right.
Um, you're reducing the required parking from one-point-five to one, now that, is that?
We don't-
Recommendation, that's not required, right?
That's a recommendation, sounds like that might not be the right way to go.
We ran into this with the, uh, the Jetty View Apartments, where they tried to make all the parking spaces smart car pa- parking spaces, and said that, you know, look, we've, we've solved your, your parking problem, that nobody drives a smart car except for two people in Clatsfield County that I can remember. And I see those cars, and I'm like, I know that person, you know, so, um.
And Heather, most of our planning commission started shaking their head no as soon as this came up, so, just so you know, since you're not in the room.
Okay, yeah, so let's not even talk about the parking piece, let's assume we'll keep that at one-point-five.
Yeah.
Um, but let's just talk about quadplexes in the medium and high-density zones, and then cottage clusters in R-ten and R-M, just making sure that that's a comfortable type of housing. In the R-M zone, we already permit, um, townhouses, we permit duplexes, triplexes, um, so just allowing those cottage clusters for flexibility, um, and then quadplexes, like I said previously, it's a whole new type of housing, um, but it, it is something that's been built in Warrenton, I've seen it there, four units on one lot. Um, it just was multifamily in the past, but now we call it a quadplex and hold it to a different standard.
I do think that cottage clusters should be allowed in more areas, um, I think cottage clusters generally tend to be, um, not giant bricks, you know? Um, and aesthetically, that's more pleasing to the neighborhood, it also creates a better community, because you have shared mul-, you know, shared spaces, um, and, and such, but, um, so I'm all for in, you know, allowing cottage clusters in pretty much almost any zone, um, that you can fit them, but, um, what does the rest of the, the group think about?
I feel the same.
I agree.
Yep.
You're opposed, cottage clusters? Okay, no, do care.
Do you have your microphone on? I'm sorry, I'm not sure she can hear you.
I can't hear it, yeah, I'm sorry.
I think it's on.
Yep, red light's on, yeah, good.
I'm opposed to them for all the things we've just been talking about. Parking problems, density problems. Uh, when you start piling people on top of them everywhere, you get a lot of problems.
To be clear.
Anybody that's been in law enforcement, I think, would agree with that. It's just, you know, it's a, it's a rural community, and you, you're taking a rural community and imposing urban standards on it, you know? I, I just don't think it's the right fit for our community, that's my personal opinion. And I've lived in all kinds of communities, I've lived in apartments and all that stuff. So I have a little bit of experience with it. Biggest thing is the parking thing.
Yeah.
So you're going to take a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, put five units on it. Everybody's going to have two cars, let's face it. They're going to have a, a couple of whatever configurations that are working. So you got ten cars on the ten-thousand-square-foot lot, when we're already worried about two cars on an eight or ten-thousand-square-foot lot. So there might be some appropriate places to put them, but I don't think it should be just a blanket, put them anywhere.
So you're, you're opposed to inclusion in R-ten and R-M zone for cottage clusters specifically? Or is it you're, uh, opposing to quadplexes as well in R-M and R-H, or can you specify your opposition?
I, I wouldn't have any of them, period.
Okay.
Okay, um, not because I'm not saying there is maybe a need for them, but not in any zone. You know, if you have a planned community, um, for instance, the one that's been planned forever out on Ridge Road there, and it's planned from the get-go that you've got it set up for that, that's one thing. But to go to a neighborhood like Paul's, and now put a cottage cluster in it, when it's already a cluster, that'd just be a mistake, and it, it's going to penalize the homeowners that live there, that want single-family homes. So we're already, we're already telling people, hey, you don't have a right to have a single-family home in a single-family neighborhood. The state's already doing that. So now you're going to keep tightening it down until you have no option of having a single-family home with a nice yard and everything.
Uh, if I could just interject, you definitely can still have a single-family home, it's still a permitted use, so the state's not taking that away from the existing zones.
If you have it right next to the door to your home that you bought ten years ago, when they didn't allow that thing, and now somebody puts a quad or a, uh, cluster in there, that's imposing on those current property owners that didn't vote for that. And you can't have a CCNR that restricts it if you allow that. So what's the answer to that?
I, I think the answer is to focus it in the higher-density zones, so putting the quadplexes in the R-M and the R-H, and then the cottage clusters are limited in size, so that each individual unit is quite small, and then they do have a parking requirement to address it onsite as well, so quadplex, um, on those higher-density lots, they're going to have to provide six spaces, six parking spaces, so the site's going to have to be big enough for the structure to meet dimensional standards, it has to meet setbacks, it has to meet height, and then it has to meet parking, six spaces, so it's really going to be a larger lot than the single-family, um, five, seven-thousand, um, square-foot lot, and it's in zones that the city established as being the medium and high-density zones, so not in the zones that were set aside, um, exclusively for single-family, which now will have the ability to have duplexes.
So maybe I heard it wrong, but I thought what was just said is that they should be allowed everywhere.
Uh, my, my specific thing is, I felt like cottage clusters specifically, not duplex, or not, uh, tri and quadplexes, um, where the, where the zoning and lot sizes allow, should be allowed in pretty much any zone that can accommodate them within the restrictions in the code. Um, whereas I'm not particularly in favor of, you know, a- adding triplexes and quadplexes in every zone under the sun, I think those should be in the, only the dense areas.
Okay.
That's why you have high densities of zoning.
So we're talking about two separate things.
Mm-hmm.
Same side, but yeah, two different things, yeah.
So to me, a, a cluster on a single-family lot is the same as allowing a quad or a triplex.
Uh, a cluster can't be, it's got to be, uh, basically up to, can't exceed eight-hundred square feet, or twelve-hundred if you add a garage, um, has to have, uh, a parking structure or communal parking, uh, and it also has to, um, uh, there's placement, so smaller college, smaller cottages, shadely located adjacent to or closer proximity, and larger cottages to adjacent public streets for visibility standards, um, or a river trail, um, there's private open spaces, orientation requirements. There's a lot more on cottage clusters than there is in any of the other aspects of housing. Um, so they even have to have, you know, a covered open porch.
Okay, I'm okay with the, I'm okay in the high-density zones with quads and tries.
Sure.
I'm fine with that. I'm not fine with these, I, and I think those little clusters are kind of cute, but I'm not fine with uh, putting them in a neighborhood such as Commissioner Mitchell's. If they have their own neighborhood of lots like that, that would be different to me. I don't think you're going to find, you can put the, uh, requirement for parking on all these things, and it's the first ordinance that's ignored. Because people are going to park where they're going to park, and the police don't have time to go to everybody's quad house and say, hey, you got too many cars in the driveway. So you just have to be realistic from the get-go, that's my opinion.
Okay.
So Mayor, I, I got the impression, and forgive me if I'm wrong, so I'm hearing, um, nothing below the middle housing density for cottage clusters, um, but then also, I kind of, I kind of clocked a flinch on quadplexes and also multifamily for anything below the medium or even high-density, was that correct from the plan- planning commission side? I felt like you really wanted to up that versus the recommended.
I, I still think cottage clusters should be allowed in, um, uh, R-M and R-ten, I don't, maybe, uh, but that's just me, so, at least R-M, at least.
And I, I think I'm hearing that from the commit- planning commission too, that R-M is the lowest, you want to go with a lot of this density, is that correct? Your, your lower density as well, okay. Okay. Mm-hmm. Okay.
You're talking about cottage clusters, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I, oh, Darren, Scott.
Uh, you know, this sounds really good, but the difference between here and like Portland, they have infrastructure, like my son was up there, and he didn't even need a car. And here, everybody needs a car to go anywhere, and so we're fighting two different, I think we need to do it, follow the law, but we're going to have a lot of car parking in places we don't want.
And to be clear, um, where Commissioner Mitchell lives, um, is technically R-M, so you could, under this code, uh, throw quadplexes in it.
So R-M or R-ten?
It's R-M. I'm looking at the, something that, right now, nautical, right? It's all R-M.
So I, it sounds like, I think we could, we can bring back from what we heard, a proposal to, and I, I think that, uh,
Option A.
Obviously, there's a range, yeah, there's a range of opinions, and I think we can come back with a couple more options.
Um, so we'll move on, I know we're going to be, I'm actually at six, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to recess this, I'm going to open up the regular commission meeting, and then I'm going to reopen this, so that we can clear this out, because it took a lot to get the schedules together, I want to make sure that we get this, we don't just leave this hanging, so I'm going to recess the work session, or the joint session, and then I am going to call the regular city commission meeting to order. Um, and then, uh, we will, uh, recess the regular city commission meeting, and we will reconvene the joint session. All right.
Nice job.
Just so it's into the record for the, our city reporters there, so, all right, next we're on to townhouses, if I remember right.
That's correct.
Getting on the homestretch.
Yeah, to homestretch here, just townhouses, and then on-street parking is the last discussion, and if that's a non-starter, or if that's totally different than off-street. Um, but let's start with townhouses, so, again, um, I do recommend these changes, um, I see these a lot in codes where it's just not feasible to build a townhouse on a lot that's twenty-five-hundred square feet, it's just too big. Um, you just, the market can't bear that much open space in the backyard, it makes an incredibly deep backyard to be able to do that. Um, so the recommendation is to reduce down to a twenty-foot width, and you currently have a seventy-foot depth, so that makes a fourteen-hundred-square-foot minimum lot size, and then lot coverage is around seventy-five percent for most townhouse products, of course, less on the ends where you have, um, side yards. Um, and then again, those front and rear setbacks are based on where the car is parked, so someone mentioned those alley-loaded, rear-loaded parking spaces, so where you can have the parking in the back, maybe you pull the front forward, where you have the parking in the front, maybe you pull the back further back, um, so that you can have adjustments on the site, flexibility.
Yeah, to the point that was raised with Commissioner Poe, um, again, I think parking's the issue, I don't have a problem with reducing the setbacks, provided you offset that setback change to ensure that there's adequate parking elsewhere on the lot, and that it's improved parking, and it's not just like grass that you're putting it on.
Right, but I think that if it's not in there already, when we define what a parking space is, we'll define the surface as well. Usually it's already in the code, but we'll check, or, or it's in your, um, designing construction standards.
Haved, I believe it's paved, it's actually defined.
Does that solve the problem, though, or will people just get a bigger trailer, another car, like?
Technically, you're not supposed to park trailers on the cities, uh, right-of-way.
Yeah.
You can't, actually.
I mean, in a parking, or like on a driveway, so right now, it barely fits two cars, we may get bigger, people get bigger cars, like, at what point, like, are we, are we even solving the right problem, is what I'm asking? Or do we need to have like a different lens to fix the issue of cars sticking under the road, becoming an issue of safety? That's my question.
Rather than continuing to create larger and larger spaces.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Have you seen any other
Yeah.
things at work, like any other mechanisms that solve the problem that we're, we're facing?
It, it's tough, because you really have so many levers to, to pull from, from a code perspective.
Mm-hmm.
And then, then you go to enforcement, and that's a whole nother question.
Well, eat revenue, right?
Well, unfortunately, enforcement, uh, police actions don't make the money, not the money.
Exactly, it costs more than-
The state doesn't allow you to make money off of police, uh, police citations. So, um, uh, all right.
I got a question on the, on the setbacks, so it says that there's going to be no minimum side setbacks, can you explain that? And then they amended, uh, they amend the front and rear setbacks, I, the setbacks are, what, fifteen front and back of ten to the side, or?
Uh, I think it's eight to the side.
It's what, eight?
Eight.
Eight to the side.
Yeah.
I mean, so we're going from no setbacks on the sides to, are they going up, are they going down, it doesn't say.
So because they're, go ahead, Heather.
I was just going to say, uh, that should have said no minimum side setbacks on the attached side, just being clear that these are attached units, so they don't have a setback.
There is no setback, yeah.
But we would maintain-
On the attached sides, but on the, but on the exterior sides.
We'd maintain the side yard setback, yeah. Yes, we'd maintain-
Change there.
Right, no change on the side, on the end of the unit, on the end of-
And how are you amending the front setbacks?
Well, so I'm recommending that if you are parking in the rear, you can go instead of a fifteen-foot setback to a ten-foot, so that there's ten feet between the front of the structure and the right-of-way, because there's no vehicles in that space.
Which is really nice, because it makes the streets, the, the homes are brought to the street, and you bring the front porch into the street, and it looks like a traditional neighborhood, has alley-fed rear parking, so you're-
It's a broad house, right?
Yeah, you're incentiv- you're incentivizing them, you're saying, hey, if you, if you have alley-fed rear parking, then you can move your building forward, and it's actually, really creates a nice street scape.
But you're looking at Commissioner Poe as his neighbor down on, down by the marina.
Hanson, they, they did, they put the, they put a parking.
Yeah, I just went by those today.
Makes it nice, but that's a brand-new street with a brand-new sidewalk, lights, everything, it's really a nice development, so.
Yeah, I, I think that, that the key is, you know, you, again, flexibility, but also trying to hit most of the nails on the head as much as you can. Um, and I think, you know, in some cases, again, you can do alleyway parking, you could do, uh, diagonal parking, you know, tandem, so, um, I think parking is probably something the planning commission might even need to have, if there's no discussion on parking standards, maybe.
It's always comes down to parking, every single project, that's true.
But yeah, I mean, as, the, the issue that we're going to face here in Warrenton is that it is going to be increasingly more difficult. Um, and as, we've seen this already, all the easy lots are built, for lack of a better term.
Yep.
And so, with very few exceptions, now you've got all these kind of weird configurations with weird historical buildings nearby that are non-conforming or such. And so, as we develop the code, it's one of those things where, you know, we've got to make sure that there's efficient land use planning, but at the same time, that we're allowing uh, some sort of variance that you don't unduly delay people, um, which I think has been the case with the rigid code, uh, from making common sense adjustments to the property to make it work. For lack of a better term, so. Um, anything else on this one, on townhomes, is anybody okay with the recommendations, or they want to reduce the recommendations, or? I'm going to hear no comments as a cent. Karen, you have?
Okay.
All right. All right, move on, uh, to on-street park, uh, what's the next one on that, I think it's?
Yep, it's just the on-street parking, I'm going to just scroll fast, um, so, the, and this, um, is something we did talk about back in September, but we talked about how if we want to allow on-street parking to count for off-street parking, it has to be on the more developed, you know, fully-built-to-city standards for on-street parking, so the street has to be the right width, it has to be designed properly and built, so that you can do this. Um, but that would mean that you could reduce your onsite parking, and, um, this isn't really part of, um, the middle housing code project, this was something your former planning director brought forward and, um, kind of bundled up in this package, so, um, this was thought of as a more citywide, um, parking one-to-one street for off-street parking space, but would love to get your feedback, and if you want to have this be part of a, a different project, um, or something like that too, we can do that.
I'd like to see if they do have on-street parking on one side only, because most of our streets, it's like you're going, doing the loop.
Well, the one thing, the downside of that, most of the time, where we see in the city, one side, I think Calmia, if you go down to the far end of Calmia, there's a section before you get to the pit, where it's just one side has, you know, supposed to not park, it's like Cedar, you know, where there was only supposed to be parking on one side of the street, of course, people park on both, because nobody's using it that, but it becomes a real bottleneck. I don't know if anyone remembers the commission, when we had the, the Gramson, um, uh, development request, when that wasn't even a legal lot to develop, that they put the flat, wasn't even recorded at the time? Recorded at the time. But that was during the Cronin era, but. They wanted to keep the same street going forward, instead of meet the new street requirements. And I think we said that we were gonna make them do the full street requirements, and I think it's important to note that if they're gonna try to go for. One-to-one ratio off-street. That we do require the regular, you know, just because the road is narrow there, doesn't mean that we have to screw up the whole way down. So I think that's the important thing to note, on the street requirements.
I'm opposed on-street parking, I think it just is gonna cause issues, I can see somebody now. Saying, this is my parking spot, right in front of my house, and what do you do sitting parking there, and then you're gonna have people are gonna say. I I'm allowed to park on the street, and here's my, you know, because there's not enough for my house. I just think we're opening the door to something that's just gonna cost us a lot of headaches. No, I, I think that's very true.
I don't see this being an issue, because it would require a new street.
It would only require streets that are meeting standard now.
Yeah, we don't have that many.
So.
Yeah.
Many commissioners, guys, go with that? Send it back to you, alright. That concludes the changes, doesn't it, or is there one more?
That's it, I really appreciate the time, and we will take the comments that have been given this evening, and we'll make revisions and put together a package. That I think Scott and I might support you on that, Scott, will bring in forward to to both bodies.
And as far as I can see, it sounds like the planning commission, the city commissioner are pretty much in alignment on parking setbacks, all that kind of stuff, so.
Perfect.
I don't think there's any major pain points there, so, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to adjourn the the joint session. And thank you all for coming. And hopefully our next joint session will be something a little bit more open and policy-based, instead of specific to this, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, alright. And we will reconvene the Warrenton City Commission meeting, regular meeting. Alright, so the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I do have one item I'd request to actually remove from the agenda tonight. That is item, business item seven D.
Seven D?
I had asked staff to do a little bit more in-depth on the history of it, and they are not prepared tonight, they would like a little more time.
Alright, so seven D will be rescinded off or tabled.
It'll be on the next meeting.
Tabled to the next ones, there unanimous consent for that, any objections?
No objection.
Alright, no objections, so ordered. Alright, consent counter before us, the city commission meeting minutes, we have the finance reports for January and February, and the police department monthly report. Is there any motions to approve the consent counters presented?
So moved.
Moved and seconded Poe Dyer to approve the consent counters presented, all those in favor, say aye. All the posts, motion carries, alright, commission reports, Commissioner Poe.
For me today.
Slasio.
We had the egg hunt from sponsored by Spruceup Warrenton, and I think. Sergeant Pierce said he estimated there were like three hundred people there.
Probably more than that. I would say more.
But I, I felt like it was a really great turnout, and appreciate both the Key Club. And the Parks Alliance for stepping up and stepping in to give us additional support where we needed it. I'm really grateful to Commissioner Mitchell, who will be stepping in as liaison while I transition. And we're always looking for volunteers, can't say that enough, these community events and. All the work that's done is volunteer-led, so that means we need more people, and the door is open. And this is an invitation for anyone that's looking to get involved, to get involved, so. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Dye?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Mitchell?
A couple of things, one, I attended the Northwest Housing Task Force, it continues to astound me. How much? This is a perfect example tonight of how much we need housing in this community, the whole county is, is. There's just not enough answers and not enough people to be able to figure out how to make it work, it's gonna take, and I hate to use this. Acronymism, but it's gonna take a village, because literally at this point, the. The housing is a serious, serious issue for this community, and unless we, we do something very soon about it. We will find that we will start losing population, because they'll have to go somewhere else to live, they will not be able to afford to live here. And the resources that are available to us. Only screams at the fact that we've got to figure out a better use for the land that we do have, and figure out how that we fit people into it. Without changing the lifestyle that we all want to continue to live. I also had an opportunity to. To attend, and it was here in, here in town this time. I, Coalpack, and it was very interesting. The different organizations and the things the cities, I find it is very interesting that. Coalpack is basically made up of cities throughout the coast in our area, and. And I find it really interesting that they all fighting the same issues we're fighting, I mean, it isn't. An us versus them, it's all of us trying to figure out what's going on, I was disappointed to find out that. CMH lost twenty million dollars. For FEMA, that was geared and promised to them to help build a new hospital. To, for the emergency evacuation center, they had a nineteen-hundred-person evacuation center. With emergency services in their designs, and FEMA last week pulled all their fundings, now this money wasn't just given to them. Recently, it was given to them two years ago, and it was given to them specifically before they designed the hos, the new hospital. So now they've got to figure, do we either create another twenty thousand, twenty million dollars, or do we scrap the plans and, or come up with another twenty million dollars somewhere? So, you know, it's, it was, it's sad to see that happening, but. There are, there are a lot of things happening, I. Commissioner Slasio said, get involved, there's a ton of stuff that we, you can help with.
Thank you. See, manager?
I don't have anything.
It's your quarter. Alright, the only thing I have to report is. The task forces are starting to, the rosters are starting to be solidified, we're almost close on the development one. And thank you to the city recorder's office for getting us the, the charter founding documents for all the boards. If you're in the audience and you're a board member, which there are several here, we'll be contacting you soon to do interviews. Commissioner Slasio and I on the board task force, because that's been solidified. And other than that. Parks Alliance? Oh, yes, thank you, the cleanup for the Parks Alliance, you're reminding me. Is this Sunday at four, what, Commissioner Slasio, why don't you just tell me? Oh, there is Parks Alliance.
It's at Sea Fairs.
Sea Fairs Park, where you meet at Big Game, it's April twenty-seventh, four to eight PM. And this, the Sunday, and then there is a. Or sorry, the cleanup is from ten AM to one PM at Sea Fairs on Sunday, and then the Chipotle fundraiser is from four to eight, right after, so. And that's the annual Earth Day cleanup that they do, and they've taken a lot of trash out there, and I've been out there with them, it's actually kind of fun to do, so. Also, I'll just note that while I was. Actually talking to Commissioner Mitchell, I saw. Some humpback whales over off Sea Fairs Park.
Seattle and got your post on Facebook, and I've sat on that same river beach and watched those whales. Do a loop.
Yep, that's what they do.
For food out there, and they're doing this loop, and they do about a one-mile loop there in front of that river beach.
So you could see whales at the cleanup?
Yeah, you could, so make sure to come out, yeah.
I want to know, as I've lived here twenty-five years and I've yet to see a whale.
For food in there, though, they, they actually come in the river and do.
Well, we'll, you can always go on my Facebook page and see the whale.
A lot of four or five spouts.
Yep, oh yeah, so we're gonna move on to public comment, do we have any on Zoom? Alright, at this time, anyone wishing to address the city commission concerning items of interest may do so. A person addressing the commission must complete a public comment card and submit to the city recorder prior to the meeting, all remarks will be addressed to the whole city commission, limited to three minutes per person. And the commission reserves the right to delay any action if required until such time as they're fully informed on the matter, our only public comment is Mr. Balanceifer.
Last commission meeting, I appreciate all your comments on fluoride, I couldn't care less for the record, I don't care either way. But I want to make one clarification, I think at the meeting it was talked about. Having to suit up to put the fluoride in the water, and it was a question to ask, anything else you have to suit up for, and they said for chlorine, well, that's not true. The only thing they have to suit up for is fluoride, if there was no fluoride put in the water, they would have to suit up for any chlorines, not. They don't need to suit up for chlorine, I got that straight from the horse's mouth. Just clarify.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying, I asked that.
Thank you, alright. Next, we have moving on, business items, Recology Rate Review.
And we do have a presentation by Recology.
Thank you, perfect, good evening, Mayor and members of the commission staff. My name is Dan Blue, I'm the Government Relations Manager for Recology Northern Oregon. And Katie Hardisty, our Operations Manager for our North Coast Operations is here as well, I have a short presentation, sorry. Might have been me, next slide, please. Just gonna go over, I know there's some new faces in the room, Commissioner, nice to meet you. Just gonna quickly do a little overview of Recology, and then we'll jump into. A little bit about our operations here at the coast, and then jump into our rate review process, so. Recology has a little under four thousand employees, can I move this over? There we go, little under four thousand employees on the West Coast, we operate. Hundred and, in a hundred and thirty-seven communities, we have twenty-six different collection companies. We operate twenty-four transfer stations, fourteen material recoveries facilities, and this is where your recyclables go to be sorted. And also eight composting facilities, including three here in Oregon, we're a one-hundred-percent employee-owned company. And I also want to emphasize that we're not a landfill company, like, we don't own landfills, we have two of them in California, but not in Oregon. We don't make profits off of sending garbage to the landfill. Let's see, so we are focused on materials management and recovery in our operations, and ensuring that we provide safe, reliable, and efficient services. In communities like Warrenton, next slide. So I'm gonna turn it over to Katie, just to talk a little bit about our North Coast operations.
Good evening, Katie Hardisty, Operations Manager for here at the coast, so I think you all know, our main operations is set out of Warrenton, Oregon, that's where we have our mechanics. Our office, and where we house our trucks, we do also operate the Asteria Transport Station, and we have a satellite site down in Nahlem. That serves our North Tillamook County customers. Locally here for Warrenton, we provide the recycling, curbside recycling services for your community, and. Your driver, Nick Schaefer, was a great addition, he's new this year, and really happy to have him on Warrenton residence, so just, yeah, thank you.
It's Katie, next slide, please. So I'll just jump right into it, we are proposing a two-point-one percent increase in the cost of recycling collection services. This year, you know, it is a privilege to be able to serve in this community under a franchise agreement, and that, that provides us with exclusivity. But we also provide franchise fees back to the city and operate within a range set by our agreement with the city of Warrenton. So the reason we're asking for that two-point-one percent increase is to kind of keep pace with the cost of services. And also to avoid having to come back and ask for a larger increase, hopefully, next year. This two-point-one percent pairs really closely with CPI, which for March to March was two-point-two percent. So the impact to recycling customers here in Warrenton would be twenty cents a month with a two-point-one percent increase. So a little bit more about the rate review process, our franchise agreement essentially provides two mechanisms to adjust rates. One of them is through a cost of living adjustment, or CPI, which is what we're doing tonight. The other approach is a more thorough rate review process, where we go much more deep, deep into the financials. I think in your packet, you have a cover letter from us, our annual report, the proposed rate adjustment. And then a third-party review from a third-party financial reviewer. I'll go in just a little bit more about the, sorry. So the way we do our, our financials, each year we look at our financials for the previous year, we look at our costs. And our revenues, and then we look at our projected costs and revenues for the current twelve-month cycle. So we essentially operate under a cost-plus model, where we have certain allowable costs, plus a reasonable operating ratio that's built into the rates. Last calendar year, our operating ratio was ninety-three-point-zero-nine percent, just a little bit outside the range. And then kind of the primary pressure this year on, on the rates are some equipment cost increases, we took possession of a new truck. Which had been back-ordered for a couple of years, that's a good thing, our, our fleet is on average sixteen years old here at the coast, and. So you know the weather can be tough on our equipment. And then we've also made some improvements to our Warrenton office and yard, so those are the kind of drivers on it. Yeah, and so, I mean, with that, a two-point-one percent rate adjustment is proposed, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have about this.
So you say it's twenty cents a month is basically what's going up, by how many users per month?
How many users, Katie, do you know approximate number?
It was a two presentations ago, you had talked, that was, it was like during the pre-pandemic. When we had the recycling rates for cardboard had gone up, because that whole issue with China, with the current trade war and all that that goes with. International shipments and all that, is. I mean, two-point-one's very reasonable, I, I guess my question is, do you see any threats on tariffs and such like that to. Your model of how you handle that, or did you already pivot since that whole debacle with China? You know, rejecting shipments that were not like ninety-five percent clean, or whatever it was.
Yeah, that, that's a great question, Mayor, we're actually projecting a little bit lower recycling costs this cycle, I think we're down maybe twenty percent. From, from previous processing costs, I haven't seen anything yet on the recycling end markets from implementation of tariffs. There's a lot of uncertainty in the economy right now, and that's, you know, we're trying to be conservative this year in, in this adjustment, but watching those things. I think the last thing I would say about it is under the Recycling Modernization Act in Oregon, which takes effect July one. The purpose of, part of the purpose of that legislation is to drive recycling processing costs to zero by transferring some of those costs onto the manufacturers. Of those products. Again, that package with tariffs, there's some uncertainty there, and I haven't read anything that it's, that, you know, that's showing that recycling costs are gonna go up or down from that.
And then my second question is, who owns the McMinnville landfill? Because you take stuff there, don't you?
We send to Coffin, I'm sorry, we send to Cowlets, but the, the landfill that we use in the valley is Coffin Butte.
Like the Great Pyramid of McMinnville, yeah. Okay, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
One more statement, so last time you were here, I was pretty hard. I gotta tell you, that. Time here sort of helps me sort of understand, I, I don't think this is unreasonable, I mean. We, we, I mean, considering the fact what it costs to run a business, based upon how much you're asking for. For a city our size, so I just want to say that I, I get it, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I had a question, if people are still throwing the strawberry clam shells in your recycle, and you're still having to deal with those, too. Because you, last time you were here, you said that was quite a problem, because you didn't have any place to put those.
Wishful recycling is still a thing, I think, you know, that's one problem, but it's not a big one, the biggest problem for us with recycling is plastic film. Plastic bags, grocery store bags, those really gum up the recycling equipment, and clam shells may or may not get recycled.
But they don't gum up the equipment, right?
Yeah, no, I'm all for the.
I know part of your budget includes education, so what type of education is like most effective to reduce? The issues that you're talking about, and like, how will that be implemented in the community?
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner, we, we send out an annual kind of customer service guide that has good explanations of what is recyclable and what's not. We also put advertisements in local newspapers here at the coast, I think some, the most effective education is working with schoolkids, and we have been doing that. We just did a poster contest here at the coast, where students put Earth Day posters together that they made. And then they were judged, and then we picked one, and that reinforces the message of kind of following what the guidelines say, and those customer service guides, so. You know, that's one great place to start, but if folks would just read things that we print out, they'd do a lot better, and not do wishful recycling, like, like you mentioned. they'd do a lot better and not do wishful recycling like like you mentioned.
Yeah.
Sure.
And so the drivers, when they notice something's contaminated, it gets marked and then a report gets ran and she, she makes phone calls to kind of habitual offenders, like, you need to keep this out of the recycle part. And if it's, keeps happening, we end up taking that away and then they can have some options to get it back, but it includes some education on their part to get it back.
I thought the state required curbside recycling.
Uh, first jurisdictions of four thousand or more.
So it's required in Warrenton. So how do you cut off somebody from recycling service if we're required by law to provide it?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a gray area, but uh, we do provide it even if.
I mean, I get why you do that. I totally do. I'm not trying to say like, gotcha, but you know.
Always ends up going back to it. It's kind of constantly trashed that we're dumping.
Sure. No, I get it. You gotta miss with the bull. You gotta get the horns, right? So.
Um, yeah. So you're not out of compliance if we pull it from someone for that.
Yeah, that's my concern is that is the city then liable because it's the city that, you know, contract with you or provided themselves, so. Um, the other question I have is, City Manager, how many garbage trucks do we have?
We have two.
How many functional garbage trucks do we have?
Uh, that depends on the day.
And Recology does the work on all of them, right?
They do our repairs for us, yes.
Okay. All right. Um, and you guys provide garbage services to what locations in Castle County? Castle County. Garbage service. Were, are we the only outlier then? Okay.
We're the only city in Oregon that does our own garbage.
Oh, in the state?
Yes.
Okay, wow, all right. Um, I take it out there will be a discussion of budget.
We are, we are gonna be doing an internal rate study with follow-up conversation probably around July this year.
All right. Well, any other questions for Recology?
Um, I just want to say thank you for donating those boxes for trash.
Oh, yeah.
At uh, the egg hunt and all the other events that you support. It's much appreciated and, yeah, thank you.
Great. Thanks for saying that.
Absolutely. And thank you for coming and presenting. A lot of places that we do franchise agreements don't give us a rundown on what's going on.
We try to come in person when we can, certainly. So appreciate the time tonight.
Appreciate you being in Warrenton as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, next we have consideration ordinance number twelve eighty-three, comp plan and municipal code amendment for flow lane. Our Thalwag discussion.
Okay.
All the state agencies are hiding their faces. That's okay.
Yeah, we we have representatives from DLCD and DSL as well. Um, I don't have.
There's Bill.
Uh, there's Bill. Hey, Bill.
Good to see your face, Bill.
So um, I I, I'm not gonna go back through my presentation. I'll, I'll mention the request again and then I'll let the, let the uh, deliberations take place. So again, requests to amend the city of Warrenton's comprehensive plan and municipal code to adopt exception to the statewide planning goal sixteen and modifier standards requiring flow lane disposal in the Columbia River. Any questions for me?
No, I do have a question of uh, Mr. Ryan.
Sure.
Hey, uh, I do have a question because I know that there was some concerns related to some permits we'd issued for dredging at the Hammond Marina because obviously you guys had uncertainty at the point when they had applied for them or started discussing them with you. Uh, and because of, you know, we had this holdup for more information from you guys. Wh- once we pass the adoption of the ordinance number twelve eighty-three, it takes thirty days to go into effect, but obviously it's going into effect. Uh, do you need uh, from the city to pass on their emergency clause to get that to uh, um, uh, to pass, or are you fine with us passing it under thirty-day review, knowing it's gonna be just the standard thirty days before it goes into effect?
I think we're fine with the thirty days.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I got that from you guys. So, all right, is there any um, questions? Is there a motion to conduct a second reading by title only of ordinance number twelve eighty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Moved a seconded Poe Dyer to conduct a second reading by title only of ordinance number twelve eighty-three. All those in favor, say aye? All opposed. Motion carries unanimous. Ordinance number twelve eighty-three and ordinance approving the changes to the warrants and comprehensive plan is described in ordinance number twelve eighty-three, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twelve eighty-three?
So moved.
Second.
Moving a seconded Poe Dyer to adopt ordinance number twelve eighty-three. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the opposed. Motion carries. The uh, ordinance goes into effect thirty days past passage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we'll go on to uh, consideration of professional consulting services, raw water line uh, replacement project. Public Works check.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you're aware, we're working on a major project to replace the raw water line in our watershed. And this is a big pipeline that conveys uh, the untreated water from our water source down to our storage and treatment facilities. Uh, this is a critical project and coincidentally, uh, today's staff had to made it a, make an emergency repair on the pipeline.
Hmm.
Uh, to repair a section that unfortunately we're going to replace uh, with this project. Um, so for tonight, there's a lot of legal language on the agenda items, so I'll attempt to simplify it a little bit. It's essentially trying to accomplish two things. The first is, we'll, this will approve our consultant to begin working on designing phase three of the raw water replacement project. So that's the first thing. The second is, this amendment is our, this amends our original design agreement to optimize and streamline project delivery. Uh, so staff worked with our legal counsel to restate the contract, the original contract we had, in a way that allows us to issue task orders. Uh, rather than going through a formal procurement process for each one of these phases that we're gonna be going through. Um, so this was the intent, the original intent for the original contract, and so this cleans up the legal language for the, for the original moment, um, agreement. Uh, and each task order will still come before the commission uh, for approval, so that you won't really see any changes from this. Uh, and with that, I'm here for any questions.
What caused the pipe?
Uh, it had been leaking, so the cause of the pipe is just the age of it and the material. It's a fiberglass um, pipeline. Um, so the new pipeline is gonna be high-density polyethylene, shouldn't have that issue for quite a number of years. So it was just beyond its, its lifestyle, life uh, expectancy. And then it developed a leak and over time, we've just been monitoring it and it just hit a point where it was like, if we don't repair it now, it's going to possibly get even worse. And uh, the other thing is we're gonna be working in this area soon and we don't want it to be all washed out and cause potential issues with the roadway.
And what's the service life for this big of HCP E-pipe?
Uh, that's a good question. I'm not a hundred percent certain, but it's uh.
And it's more expensive.
Yeah, um, but I don't, I don't know the exact, exact time, lifetime of it.
Okay, so we don't know the um, we don't know the expected service life of, like, you know, we're gonna be replacing this in twenty years, thirty years, fifteen. What's the age of the fiberglass pipe right now?
Um, I don't have the exact age. I wouldn't wanna guess.
As I'm, I'm sure it's probably twenty plus, you know.
Uh, Mayor, if I Google it, it says the expected lifetime is fifty years or even up to a hundred years, depending on how it's treated. I would expect up in our watershed probably closer to fifty years.
Yeah. Hopefully, there's no uh, stray bullets that hit it. I know that's been a problem in the past. So, um, alrighty, well, uh, is there any questions of staff? All right, is there a motion to approve the amended and restated contract for professional consulting services with Consort North America and authorize the mayor to execute task order number one for the design of RP three and RP four in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-one dollars?
So moved.
Okay. Moving a seconded, Silacio Mitchell to have um, approve the amended and restated contract for professional consulting services with Consort North America and authorize the mayor to execute task order one for the redesign or for the design of RP three and RP four in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the opposed. Motion carries. We'll move on to, uh, we're not doing seven D. That's being tabled, so next meeting. So we're going on to two thousand six John Deere tractor. Right, back at it.
Yes, and for this, we're requesting your approval to dispose of uh, a surplus John Deere tractor through GovDeals Auctions. Uh, the current tractor, we, we have a newer tractor, so this one's just kind of staying around the shop and it has transmission issues. Uh, it's not getting into first gear and we don't believe that it's worth further investment.
Doesn't run like a deer anymore?
What's that?
It doesn't run like a deer anymore?
Not at all.
No. All right. Any questions of staff? Their motion to approve the auction of the two thousand six John Deere tractor for the benefit of the city of Warrenton.
So moved.
Moving a seconded, Dyer Mitchell to approve the auction of the two thousand six John Deere tractor for the benefit of the city of Warrenton. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the opposed. Motion carries. We're moving on to consideration of municipal judge contract, City Manager, or I guess.
Yeah. Yes, so uh, you had authorized me to create a new contract. Um, you did have two applicants and interview them. I believe you had a task force of two people to interview and from there, the highest um, scoring was selected and you have before you a contract and also requesting um, your authorization then to um, release your current contract with a thirty-day notice. So the intent would be, if you approve this contract tonight, the thirty-day notice would be a starting date of June first for the new judge and um, the thirty-day notice would go into effect May first, basically, for the other judge, so.
And uh, so Commissioner uh, Mitchell graciously agreed to sit on the interview panels um, with the, the two judges. And um, so I think the scores were relatively pretty close. Um, I I don't see the final one. I just know that the, what the winner was. But the um, uh, I think they both have lots to offer, but I think in uh, where the city was going in terms of the contract, as well as uh, just in, in general, I don't know if Commissioner Mitchell, you have anything to say about it, but um, I think uh, both were good picks, but I think Ashley just ended up on the top.
Yeah, I agree with you. I I think that her time as a prosecutor for the city is this, uh, sort of got used to our ways and who we are and perfect lead into her next role.
Is there any questions? All right, so is there a motion to approve the new city municipal judge agreement?
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, moved and seconded, I'm gonna go Mitchell Poe, uh, my ears are uh, uh, to approve the new city municipal judge agreement. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All the opposed. Motion carries. And um, we don't have a discussion items. I'm gonna respectfully request, though, that um, uh, if the commission uh, has a, a specific preference on how they wanna do, the city manager's review is coming up uh, for your contract and um, in the past, we've done everything from interviewing the department heads to doing none of that and basically just kind of um, running a review kind of by the goal-setting sessions. We've got new goals this year. I just didn't know what the commission felt like. They wanted to create a subcommittee to do that review, or if they wanna do it unbunk, everybody, or if they wanted to just hold the schedule review on the executive session, we can do it just as a board.
I think we could just do the executive session as, as a board.
Yeah.
It's my first time, so I'll abstain.
I'll agree.
I agree. All right, so we'll just schedule it, uh, the next uh, meeting for executive session, or if that meeting's too long, maybe we'll just kick it to the one down if that's okay with you. Um, and if I recall for the record, you were closing, requesting executive session.
I usually do request executive session.
That's pretty standard.
Yep.
All right. Uh, no, uh, good to be ordered, Commissioner Poe.
And nothing for me except the whale.
And what a whale of a tale that is.
Nothing.
It's logic.
Nothing.
Okay. All right, well, I'm not gonna add to the pile, so uh, we have no executive session and we'll stand adjourned. Now we gotta go into urban renewal. Make sure I got this here. All right, we'll call, do you need some time? City Recorder, I know some time. Okay. Um, we'll call the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting to order. Roll call's been taken, I take it?
Yes.
So we have the consent calendar for us, the agency meeting minutes for April eighth. There any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, Poe Dyer to approve the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Minutes, uh, and the Consent Calendar. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All the opposed. Motion carries. Only item on the agenda is the update on current fiscal year projects and outstanding budget. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, I did.
Sorry, Executive Director.
Yep, I did want to give you an update after your session setting um, the projects for the next two years. I wanted to make sure it was clear there were some outstanding projects as well that will be kind of dovetailed into that. Um, so I wanted a quick update on um, the, the current outstanding projects, which is this current fiscal year. Um, so the Peterson property, which is a property just adjacent to City Hall, there is a um, wetland delineation and start of the design with the actual project anticipated kickoff in the next fiscal year. Um, so that is kind of wrapped into your other priority projects as well. It's adjacent to, because it was already set as a project moving forward. And I expect the design of that project to come before the Urban Renewal Agency probably around July for review and approval. Um, we have done the wetland delineation and they're, they're working forward on that. Um, for the Heron Building, we're still working on wrapping up that. I do anticipate ending that um, wrap-up by the end of this fiscal year. Um, it's just been a matter of getting contractors out there in good weather. Um, but we're down to the last um, few items. Um, probably the one hiccup I had was the HVAC where we were gonna locate it. We've gone everywhere from the roof and back down again, but we have to build a platform because of the floodplain. Um, so that one's been an interesting one. Um, asphalt's going in tomorrow. Uh, the painting of the exterior was done and we're working on a generator. Um, but everything else has been wrapped up for the bloodproofing, so we're getting very close. And then um, facade grants, I did want to remind you, um, we had four um, budgeted this year. I think I am squeezing in um, one small one as well for the um, Seafarers, uh, not Seafarers. I always call it that, the um, the Lighthouse Park. Um, they did squeeze in an application and I think we're gonna try and make that one work as well, but that is the wrap-up of facade grants. Um, so we will not be carrying those forward into the next um, budget year. And then um, priority buildings grants, I, I was a little incorrect. I had stated we were spending about half of that for this year, but we were taking some of that toward the next year's projects. So we were looking at um, the budget for this year and we're using that as, you know, looking at the starting fund for next year when we talked about the total amount for the next year. So obviously, if you spent more on grants this year, you would have less to spend in the next fiscal year. So I wanted to make sure that carryover of the new, new budget um, is, is where that would come from.
So on the new weight carpet, we gave them a hundred and if I remember, that's not the full amount.
I had stated that there was about two hundred thousand left and I was incorrect. Um, because what we were looking at as our finance director was looking at this, she was taking a starting fund balance um, to project to you for the priority projects for the next year and that money was already what, what she was including in that amount.
So we got two hundred grand for the rest of the urban renewals district's life, a hundred of which has now been pulled for that, which leaves a hundred left for the rest of the district, correct, for major?
Not quite. Uh, so for the, for the rest of the
That's not obligated.
Fiscal year, we, so if you wanted to spend another hundred thousand in this fiscal year, you could, but that said, it would take up, away from a project for next year, if that makes sense.
A project that has yet to be decided, correct?
Well, you already set some priority projects.
Oh, you're talking about that? Okay.
Yeah, so you've already budgeted for next year and you'll see that budget, so that budget is including some of that money. So basically, I'm saying, if you wanna spend it this year, you're gonna short a project for next year in essence, when you look at your budget. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear. That was part of why this budget, because, so I was incorrect in, in that statement. Um, so I wanted to update you on that. Obviously, you have your priority list for the next two years. Those are the ones we're looking at and doing. So basically, we have wrapped up any other, um, the previous priority buildings. Now we're focused on your new, um, your new priority list. And then in the food cart pod, um, I'm, I'm nearly done with that. Uh, we've ordered some picnic tables. The trash receptacle should be here any day and I'm getting some planters out there any day as well.
Having gone to the uh, food cart pod today and seeing the new picnic tables, um, and how robust they are, I can see the cost that you suggested. The Quincy Robbins is interested about why they cut so much, but they're very good. They're very nice and the.
Well, hopefully they last a while, yes.
Look like they'll last longer than.
We need to reconfigure and, and do some cleanup out there, um, but hopefully we'll get all that done soon.
Perfect.
So again, I wanted to give you an update because I did state things a little bit misleadingly at the last meeting and I wanted to give you that update on kind of, some of these things are wrapping up, but things like the Peterson project will carry over into the next fiscal year. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of where we were with all the current projects.
Any questions, Executive Director? All right, well, thank you. Hearing none, we have no more further business and we will call this meeting adjourned.